The President of the United States of America. And to the Republic, or British States, one nation, under God, indivisible,
Good evening, Justice Peron. And apparently Zoom was muted, so bear with me. Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting again for Monday, April 1st. Six o'clock, we are in the auditorium at Town Hall tonight. This meeting is being recorded. If anyone else is recording the meeting, they are to let the Vice Chairman know, please. Um, this meeting is being conducted in a hybrid fashion, both in person and on Zoom. In attendance tonight, myself, what's that?
Oh, I just know.
In attendance tonight, myself, Chairman Doug Moglen, Vice Chairman Jason Perone, Diane Gale, clerk. And may I introduce Acting Chief Administrative Officer, Robert A. Landis. Also in person, Assistant Chief Administrative Officer, Nadine Signoni. And our Secretary Lisa Anderson is in the other room. At this time, I'd like to take public comments. If you would, please do us a favor, because like I said, the acoustics in this room are bad. If you could come up to the front of the room and, and grab the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and then we'll take any public comments. We'll start in the room tonight. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak under public comments? Sir, please. We have a microphone right there for you, sir. I think you just push the button till the light turns green.
Good evening, uh, this is what the show looks like. This is my sign. I put it there. My name is Roger Patel. And I'm in Fort Hills, too. I worked on the police department for thirty-six years. I retired after thirty years, I came back. The town allowed me to come back for five more years due to state legislation. Just about a year ago, I came back and I was hired by the Select Board for doing traffic control. I was on for about a year. One day I'm working traffic detail and I get a call from the police chief saying, oh, you're fired. Never gave me any information. I asked him why. I'm not following. Don't even tell me why I was fired. I went to chief's office the next day, asked him why I was fired. And he says, uh, I'm not, I asked, well, who? And why? He says, I'm not telling. But there was a complaint by somebody that I wasn't doing my job properly. The next week or so, I asked the Select Board to give me a hearing, because they wanted to hire me. Moglen sends me a letter saying, we're not, we're not going to listen to my complaint. That's what they do to town employees and citizens of this town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak under public comments? Okay, we'll go to Zoom. There's a lot of folks on Zoom tonight, so if you could use the hand raise function, please. I see none. So then if, if you do have a public comment here on Zoom, start talking. Okay. First order of business for six oh five P M. is a liquor license hearing. A transfer from Prime Steakhouse to Five B's LLC, doing business as the Blackboard Congammon, located at one oh one Point Grove Road, Southwick, Mass. Greg and Kristen. Thank you. Could you say that louder?
The savages.
Okay, I'll go with Greg and Kristen, if that's okay with you. Please. Um, we can get you one more chair, or you could just grab a chair from the front row there. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening, board. I'm Alexandra Logan, representing Five B's LLC for the liquor license transfer at one oh one Point Grove Road in Southwick. Um, this is all on-premise, all alcohol liquor license, when transferred from Prime Steakhouse LLC to Five B's. Mr. Red Reed, I'm going to say a little bit of which of it is?
The savages.
Okay. Will be, uh, the acting manager for the liquor license. Um, he intends to be on premises, the hours plus a week. Um, they already run a restaurant in South Windsor blocks. Uh, they, sorry, Windsor blocks called, um, the Blackboard. This will also be DBA, the Blackboard, in Southwick. Um, the food is intended to be somewhat like tavern food, but goes as high as steak and some lobster type dishes. Um, the service hours are intended to be seven days a week from Sunday to Saturday, eleven A M. to two A M. Uh, as well as the indoor entertainment, outdoor entertainment will be eleven A M. to ten P M.
Thank you. Is there anything else you wish to add?
None at this time. Do you have any questions?
Well, we're, the Blackboard right now, Windsor Lots, is more of a bar than, and we basically, basically outgrew, um, our kitchen. You know, because we do a lot of food out there, um, and their food's excellent. So this is an opportunity to go more into restaurant mode, you know, kind of, not that we're not going to serve alcohol at the bar, but the Blackboard Windsor Lots is a bar. You know, this is going to be more restaurant, family, children, so, so forth. Um, that's basically what we're going to do. I'm getting too old to be doing this bar business until two A M. in the morning. We put two A M., the chances of us being open that later are very slim. Uh, we're going to stay open as late as any other liquor license in our vicinity. You know, there's not a good habit to travel from one liquor license permit to another. You know, because something closed earlier. You know, so we're trying to stay consistent with the people on the business around town, not to accrue out too many um, businesses they're doing, coexist positively, you know, um, if they're doing a special on one night, make sure you don't compete with that on something on the bigger night, just to make sure everyone's happy and go along.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions from the board?
I have none. I'm just glad to see that there's activity going on.
Ms. Gale?
I hear you under fifty hours. That would be a blessing. Um, I assume you'll be serving on the gap?
Yeah, yeah, server, you're on the server.
You will be open all year?
Yes.
Plan to be?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, good.
Yes, there might have been some complaints, um, earlier, from other previous places about noise and all that. And we should, we're very conscious of that, and we should, whatever the town has on the noise on this, we should have thought that in the beginning as well. Not until I'm just serving neighbors.
Very well. And you already have your tip certification and all of that stuff?
Yeah, we're working on getting it on through Massachusetts, just to make sure that it's on the safe business chain, to get it served safe, everybody in the building as well. There'll always be a Q and A.
I'm sorry?
There'll always be a Q and A, but I, we serve in the building at all times, and I saw my managers.
Excellent. Anything else?
Justice, when do you anticipate opening?
Uh, hopefully, I may. This is the plan. You know, I think it really depends a lot on Ireland. That's going to really be the, the help to go over, um, exactly, and I mean, it should fall in place, but Georgia, so Ireland, that's going to be the telltale.
Oh, another question?
It's a long distance call from there here.
I have another question.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I think then we would entertain a motion, right, to transfer the license from Prime Steakhouse um, to Five B's LLC for the address at one oh one Point Grove Road. We do have a, a letter here from, um, there is a, uh, let me just make sure. Let me get the hearing read in, just so for, so we're all official. Notice is hereby given under Chapter one thirty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws that Five B's LLC DBA, the Blackboard Congammon, is applied for a transfer of the on-premises all alcohol liquor license at one oh one Point Grove Road, previously owned by Prime Steakhouse LLC, located on Westerly side of Point Grove Road in a two-story frame building, four rooms on the first floor, three rooms on the second floor, storage room, four entrances and exits in the kitchen, and a deck in the back, seven thousand eight hundred and sixteen square feet. The proposed hearing will accomplish a transfer of said license from Prime Steakhouse LLC to Five B's LLC DBA, the Blackboard Congammon, establish entertainment licenses and establish serving hours from eleven A M. to two A M. Saturday through Sunday. The proposed hearing will also accomplish establishing indoor entertainment Saturday through Sunday between the hours of eleven A M. to two A M. and outdoor entertainment Saturday through Sunday during the hours of eleven A M. to ten o'clock P M. Date of the hearing is April first at six oh five in the Select Board Conference Room, um, which was moved to the auditorium, four fifty-four College Highway. And that's signed by myself, Jason Perone and Diane. Yeah. Okay. So I'd entertain a motion at this point to close the hearing, or unless, uh, I think we actually go through this. Does anyone else like to speak in favor of this application?
And the last go, Realist Road, I definitely speak in favor of Kristen and Greg. We have a lot of people interested in the property, and they were definitely the, um, the best candidates.
Mr. Allen?
Chris Allen, I own Allen's Ford and Auto at ninety-six Point Grove Road, across the street. And, uh, I'd just like to say I'm in favor of getting the business back in there. Also, I think you guys have seen it, Matt, where they say it's Saturday through Sunday, is it Sunday through Saturday? Sounds enjoyable over two days, Saturday through Sunday.
It is how it reads. But I do believe you're correct.
I think that's a typo. It wasn't, it was intended to be seven days, with Sunday through Saturday.
We'll go with that.
I know it's seven days on that.
Yeah. The only thing we not, we need to check, uh, well, let me, let me keep going in the room. Is there anyone else in the room that wants to speak in favor of this license? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak in favor of this license? Is there anyone in the room or on Zoom that would like to speak in opposition to this license? Okay, the only thing I'd note, and just by past practice, we usually don't have, what is the serving hours on Sunday usually? Do we usually start at noon or at eleven?
It's done as early as eleven on some things.
For, for a temporary, right? Any large objection to a noon on Sunday start?
No.
Okay, now I'd entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Let's take a roll call vote to close the hearing. Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perone, aye.
And Dylan.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to grant the license transfer uh, with the hours of Sunday through Saturday of, uh, eleven A to two A, except for Sunday, which will be twelve P M. to two A.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Uh, let's do a roll call vote for that as well. Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perone, aye.
Thank God.
Congratulations. Welcome to the town of Southwick. Best wishes and good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, let's just knock out a couple of things real quick, and then we'll move on to our interviews. We'll acknowledge payables warrant number two four two zero dated three twenty-six in the amount of two hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety cents. We're going to table the open session minutes from three twenty-five. Are there executive session minutes from three twenty-five? There are motions to approve the executive session minutes from March twenty-fifth.
I'll make that motion.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perone, aye.
All right, and we'll come back for the open session minutes at a, uh, future meeting. And do we have the finance, Joint Finance Committee meeting, budget hearing minutes for three nine and three twenty-three? I see the ones for three nine.
They're together.
They're stapled together.
Did you agree with that?
I hold them there.
Oh, that's right. I will make a motion to accept those minutes. Four, three, nine, and three twenty-three?
Yeah. Uh, I'll second it with one change, uh, minor. I was remote for the twenty-third minutes, twenty-third meeting. So motion made and seconded, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Thank God.
Jason Perone abstained.
Okay. Okay. At this time, we're going to start the process for interviews for Police Chief. Um, we have two candidates tonight. Uh, Lieutenant Red Banish and Sergeant Thomas Crocker. Um, we're going to do them in alphabetical order. And by first name and last name, the order is the same. So, uh, Lieutenant Banish will be our first candidate to interview tonight. Hey. Lieutenant? You, sir?
So these questions for me?
Yeah, yes, sir. All right, so here's the, the general process. We've got a bunch of questions for you. Should take no more than three or four hours to get through, kidding. And at that app, when we're done with our questions, there may be some follow-ups to those questions. Um, and then at the conclusion of the Q and A session, there'll be an opportunity for you to make any statements or add any additional information that you may desire to do so. Everybody all set?
Sure.
Okay. So we'll just go serially, all right? Why don't we start with Diane first?
Okay. Thank you for coming. Thank you for applying for such an esteemed role. We just, um, saw these questions for the first time, so forgive us if we stumbled.
I'll bear with you.
We couldn't prepare. Please describe what immediate steps you would take to prepare and coordinate efforts in the event of a major disaster such as a tornado, requiring all manpower on deck?
So for any major event, you're going to have to get all your personnel in. Um, we would be using our Code Red system.
Probably want to use the microphone.
Yes?
There's a button.
Button?
It'll turn green.
Yes. Sorry.
All right.
So anytime you have a major emergency, you're going to have to get all your, uh, personnel. So generally, what we use, we use our Code Red system, and that's the first phone call. In a situation like you described, there's a good possibility that that Code Red system may be down. It's a good chance that the, uh, telephones and cell phones may also be down too. So we would have to go to other means to get the officers in. And at this point in time, the majority of our department, uh, actually lives on the town. So being able to do that would be somewhat of a problem. We would have to potentially reach out to other departments in the area to go and get hold of our officers. Uh, once we do get the officers in, you know, we're going to have to come up with a game plan as far as what the, uh, hardest hit areas are, what's needed, uh, you know, what other assets do we need to get in? We're going to have to get in D P W., probably Red Cross, medical, um, other police departments, depending how localized this is, if this is a Southwick or this is a Southwood, Westfield, Agwam type of, you know, you know, tornado usually doesn't track that far. It's usually fairly localized. So we should be able to get some mutual aid assets in from the other departments. Uh, you know, once we get to that point, we've also got to involve our town government, our C A O. There's going to be a lot of reimbursements and such that we're going to have to be able to cover in a situation like that. Um, hopefully, I've covered that pretty good to your liking at this point.
Do you want me to do the follow-up?
Sure.
All right, follow-up to that. Suppose another agency or subordinate fails to follow your command. What do you do immediately? And then what do you do in the aftermath?
Are we talking in this particular event or is this separate?
In this event.
So basically, you're saying if I, or one of the supervisors asks or tells this person to go somewhere and do something they don't do, because, um, I understand it's correct.
They don't follow the command, yeah.
Okay.
So in the event where they don't follow the commands, we're going to look at, you know, immediate, um, action. So persons, unfortunately, if they continue to not do what they're being told, they're going to be sent home uh, immediately. In the aftermath, then we're going to be opening internal investigation to see where the failure was. Once you do that, you've got to go through the internal investigation process. Step by step, the person has their rights. So they're going to have to, you know, be notified of everything. They'll have meeting representation, and so on and so forth. And once, once it's done, then it's, it's up to the chief, uh, Heather Renation, the internal investigator with, uh, punishment. There may be, it's up to the chief to make that determination on this one.
Okay.
I got an easy one. What makes you the most qualified applicant for this position?
So naturally, your decision whether or not the most qualified or not, um, at this point, I've been with the department twenty years. Um, in that time, I've been a reserve officer. I've been a full-time officer. I've been a sergeant. I've been a lieutenant now. I also uh, did some work outside of there, worked at Mahoney for a year, something like that, part-time. Uh, in that time, like I said, I have three years of administrative time. And in that administrative time, in the absence of the chief, I do his duties and responsibilities. So I've gotten, um, the opportunity to make decisions in the absence of the chief, on the department, in the absence of the chief. Furthermore, I I have, I should say, attained two degrees. I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. I also have a master's degree in criminal justice. I've attended multiple M P T C classes for management. Uh, you know, in this time, I've also attended your monthly, or I should say, your weekly meetings on a regular basis for probably the last three years. Uh, in the last three years as well, I've attended multiple community functions, senior events, school events, civic fund events, program regional events. I've taken leadership roles at the P D. every chance I've gotten. Um, some of those roles are F T O., it's Field Training Officer, also Field Training Coordinator, Reserve Program Coordinator, and Reserve Program Supervisor. Those were while I was the, uh, sergeant. Uh, I've also set up interviews for the people coming on board, whether it be reserves or full-time officers. I contacted them, set them up correspondence, came up with the questions, and interviewed them as part of the board prior to getting to the, the Select Board floor. For a while. Uh, additionally, I have experience, uh, on the town committees, um, on the L E P C. Right now, I was a police department representative. Uh, I was the chairman of that board, actually, for two or three years, if I remember correctly. I was also on the short-term rental subcommittee, so I did some experience with uh, the town committees and boards, as I was saying. Additionally, I was the union president for a period of time, and also a vice president, so I have some uh, experience of labor negotiations and contracts, albeit from the other side. It was a, a good experience. Uh, I also have experience, uh, coordinating large events such as the motocross, the regular A and M., which unfortunately is a longer business. And the Iron Man, which I actually caught through here in a couple of months. Uh, additionally, I am a town resident here. Uh, I grew up here, schooled here, my wife's here, my kids go to school here, so you do have a different perspective as far as how things go when you do live here and you're seeing everything on a day-to-day basis. You just all go home at the end of your day, and then that's the end of it. Additionally, and I cringe to bring this up usually, uh, when I was fifteen years old, my father died in a work accident. Um, so that was quite a shock in the sense, as you can probably imagine. Uh, a few years later, my mother passed away from cancer, uh, when I was twenty-one. So as you can imagine, that will leave quite a mark on you, so. Um, I think I will, I will have a question there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Lieutenant Banish, what was your worst day in a supervisory position?
Worst day? You know, worst day really doesn't come to mind. I tend not to dwell on things. Um, when brought into perspective of what I just spoke of last, I mean, I can't think of very many worse days than those. Um, as far as bad days, I would say any of the, any of the failures that we've had over the years, they are to put it in perspective, they're, they're a mess, unfortunately. They're hectic. It's, it's quite trying as far as trying to deal with a situation like that. You've got now people coming in from every direction wanting to do something. In some cases you can, in some cases you can't. So specifically, I have nothing specific, unfortunately. However, that would be my, my general worst type of day.
Thank you.
Are you calming down a little bit?
You're starting to still talk.
What have you done over the course of your career to prepare yourself for the chief?
So over the course of my career, I guess we'll go all the way back to, you know, when I was in high school, I suppose, the time of the part, my career probably started there. Um, I really wasn't sure what I wanted to do. At that point in time, I, you know, looked at different things. This was appealing for a couple of different reasons. Um, so I figured to get into this, I would talk to someone, you know, somebody else. Um, so I figured to get into this, I would talk to some, you know, some of the officers here in town, which I did at the time. And the suggestion at that point in time would obviously go to school, get your education. And once you get to around the age of twenty-one, move, you know, busy maybe coming on here as a, as a part-time officer. So that's what I did, went to Westfield State, graduated there, you know, nineteen ninety-seven. I was, I believe it was like a three, four, seven or something of that nature. Uh, at that point, I still wasn't hired full-time, I was hired in eighteen ninety-six as a reserve. And in the time between then and two thousand, I was hired full-time, I still had some time on my hands, so I figured I would get the master's degree at that point in time. Because quite honestly, I figured as the longer it went, the less likely I'd be able to go back, and be able to go back just because of family commitments and work and everything else, so I pretty much followed with everything, the idea that you know, the master's degree will give me a foot up, I guess we'll say, in the process. Whether it be being hired full-time, whether it be promoted, whether it be becoming a chief. Generally speaking, uh, the promotional process does favor those who have the degrees. So that was sort of my long-term plan. On the shorter side, um, after I got hired, I did classes, M V T C classes and such. Um, I just, you know, refer to my notes here real quick as far as some, some of what these classes actually were. I did spend some time uh with specialized training of the administrative classes in the last three to four years. Some of the classes I've been to are the uh C A T S readiness suite, what that is, is the C A T S is the tracks, excuse me, the tracking system for the M V T C as far as all the classes that we do. This is how we go in and retract the officers, how to enter them into uh the system for training purposes. Uh, I've also attended a class building weight culture law enforcement, a community engagement class, a de-escalation use of force developments class, First Amendment uh audit class. Especially when I did attend the FBI leader classes, there's three of them. The Command Leadership Institute, that's a one-week class. The Executive Leadership Institute class, which is a week, and the FBI leader supervisor leadership institute class, which is also a week long. Uh, that is what they call their I'll try to factor it, it's their, it's their three classes that they do. And what leader stands for is the Law Enforcement uh Executive Development Association. Uh, in addition, I also went to a number of I C S classes. International Duty Workshop, Potential Leadership was a three-day class. Law Enforcement and Command Staff, understand the, the uh aspects of a smaller police department, it was a one-day. Uh, bunch of liability classes, legal liability reform class, or the post. Also went to managing F T O program. Federal Health Thursday, Niners boarding, and what Niners is, that was a three-day, Niners is all the crime data that we submit to the.
Is that it? So L T, what is your management philosophy, philosophy style, and how do you resolve conflict?
So my initial philosophy, I guess, is, is really teamwork. Uh, in order for us to, you know, get where we need to be, you gotta have everybody acting as one. So. Spawns my train of thought, sorry. Did you read that for me one more time?
What is your management philosophy slash style, and how would you resolve conflict?
So like I said, it's, it's teamwork, I want to be able to give the officers the opportunity to make as many decisions as they can at the lower levels, because when you do that, you do create something where the officers have a vested interest in it. And when they have got a vested interest in something, they're more likely to perform at a higher level because they've got, as I said, an interest in the final outcome. As far as conflict resolution goes, uh, the easiest way to do that is to talk directly with the person and find out why whatever happened, happened, or is happening. You know, a lot of conflicts are basically the result of misinformation, uh misunderstanding, not having the full story. So if you can come and find that common ground, a lot of times you can uh take care of the conflict that's in front of you, not always, but a lot, a lot of times.
There's a caveat to this question, so I'll give that to you ahead of time. Please note before answering the following question, the candidate should make sure no specific examples or names are referenced in answering this question. Do you feel that necessary and warranted discipline is consistently applied in the department? And do you feel positive recognition is rightly and consistently applied? How will you ensure that both discipline and recognition are always consistently and equitably applied without inherent or intentional biases?
Want to write that down?
Can I add that?
You can take notes.
So I would say, as far as that goes, again, I've been here for twenty-eight years. I've seen a lot of problems over the years that were handled in different ways, we've had different supervisors who've handled things different ways, we've had different chiefs and lieutenants who've done things in different ways. Someone more have to give someone paper, someone more have to give someone a warning, don't do that again, knock it off. It depended on the individuals involved. So. As far as that question goes, I would say no one has not been uh done fairly across the board the entire time. You know, since I've, in my position, I am the Internal Affairs Investigator at this point in time, I try to do everything according to the policy, the procedure, the rules, the regulations. I think fairness is very, very important when you do these, similar types of events should end in similar types of punishments or reprimands or education. Thing you also have to take into account is we do follow the rules of progressive discipline here. So a first-time event, depending what it is, is generally going to end up in a verbal warning, a educational uh change, possibly a written warning, it depends on you know, what level we're actually at at that point in time, once you start moving more into situations where you've got a repeat offender, you've established a pattern of conduct, this is where things start to escalate up, this is where you start talking into your situation where you may have a suspension or termination or something of that nature. And again, as an internal investigator now, my job is to go in and, you know, fairly go through all the information, come to some form of conclusion, and give those conclusions to the chief of police. Chief of police in turn will look at the files, the chief of police will determine whether you know, my suggestions are accurate, or if he wants to possibly go a different direction based on what he sees in their files, I don't have access to the I D files themselves, I turn them over to him. And once they're turned over to him, it's up to him to make those decisions.
I'm gonna follow up, if you, let's turn that on its head for one second, because there's the other half of the, of the question. And do you feel that positive recognition is rightly and consistently, consistently applied, and how will you ensure that both discipline or recognition are consistently and equitably applied without inherent or intentional bias?
So I always thought it strained, but they actually say that positive discipline actually is something. I mean, I always think of discipline as something negative, but discipline does include the positives such as, you know, reward and commendation. So we do have an employee, um, I can't remember what it's actually called. And employee recognition calls. And it's pretty well spelled out in there how everything takes place if, you know, a supervisor sees one of his former officers has done something exemplary, then there's a process to submit that on the chain to myself, to the chief, to have that person formally recognized. Uh, as far as other forms of recognition, you know, it's always a good thing even, you know, it's nothing you know, out of the ordinary, that someone's not, a job well done is a job well done, so you do want to take and tell the people when they, when they've done something good, you know, rising up to that level for something formal is, is something else. But it is good for everyone to know that they are doing a good job, they do matter, and they are appreciated.
And one more follow-up please, is there a gray area into which either could be withheld?
Not sure I understand the question there.
Me either, because I didn't write it, but um. So if there's times when you're gonna have discipline and or recognition, but is there a gray area in which either of those would be withheld?
There shouldn't be.
Thank you.
I guess that's my answer, that there shouldn't be, if someone's earned something, then they should get it.
Thank you.
How will you prepare the bench of future officers and leaders in the Southwood Police Department?
So preparing the bench, as we've heard probably in a couple uh interviews before, this is, you know, it's very important. The current officers now need to be trained, and unfortunately, as police, we sort of do things backwards, you don't train you before you go into some of these positions, we train you after. So if you do a good job as a patrolman, you may be promoted to sergeant, you get the sergeant, and you unfortunately have no real idea what you're doing once you get there. You may have some idea because you've been a shift commander in the past, but you don't get the actual formalized training until which point in time you've been promoted. The same goes for lieutenant, the same goes for chief. One of the biggest things we have to do is keep on top of the training. I have training under my wing, that's one of my duties that I do here, um. So I regularly check the C A T S, which is again the training uh portal for the M V T C. And I check for different classes that are in there as far as, you know, who needs what. Uh, most of the classes I told you about earlier are cast, are classes that came through a C A T S, management case, uh classes, leadership classes. If we can identify people ahead of time that would like to track their supervisory positions, we can begin to send people to these classes to get them ready to see if that's a fit for them and a fit for the department.
Is that something that you would do?
That's something that, yes, yes, I would do, like, to my planner, doing it now. Um, the unfortunate part is, over the last year, you know, we've been down with staffing. So, you know, being down with staffing unfortunately limits some of the other things you can do, like send the people to the classes, you know. Biggest responsibility we have is to, you know, cover the road, and then we can, you know, sort of branch out from there.
All right, multiple, multiple parts to this one.
Not multiple choice.
Uh, not multiple choice, multiple parts. Given your experience within the Southwood P D, what do you think the greatest strengths of the department are? What areas, weaknesses, or skill sets of the Southwood Police Department could use improvement?
So I pretty much figured that question was gonna come up. I did talk to a large amount of the officers on the department about what they saw as the strengths and weaknesses of the department. So it varied, um, you know, because what we see up in the administrative might be different from what they're seeing down in the patrol division. Our, you know, views are, again, they're, they're just, they're different. So we just go in there because I don't want to mess up anything and it's all me. But the strengths of the department are the overall freedom, uh, the officers do not feel to be micromanaged with the current administration. They feel that being able to take time off, the way we take time off is a great benefit. They also feel that the current command staff works very well together, that's myself, that's the chief, that's the sergeants. They feel we're all approachable, everyone gets along, mostly. And I say mostly, because just like any family, you're going to have disagreements, uh, you're gonna have problems. But there's nothing in there that's going to, you know, stop everyone from doing the, the job we need to do. Uh, the current morale is good, it is a family-type environment, people do look forward to coming to work. Uh, as far as improvements we could potentially make in the department, uh, communication always comes up unfortunately. And communication is something that you know, in all aspects of life, communication is, is very important, if someone doesn't have the answer to something, they're going to come up with an answer. Whether that information is correct or not, usually leaves a lot to be desired. Again, a lot of this boils down to the officers will hear things in the back, they will not understand why something's being done, and sometimes it's you know, an issue where it's personal for someone, it's an injury for someone, it's mental health issue for someone, it's not information that we're going to take and just discriminate around the police department, and unfortunately, sometimes when people don't get answers, again, they're going to come up with their own if they're just told that, you know, the person is out on a proof sleeve.
That's the end.
Um, another improvement, um, that was brought up was the lack of continuity with the, what we'll call short-term chiefs, I guess. We've had a couple now that have gone three years out, the last two, I think the one prior to that, I think was seven, so it just seems like every time you get going, now you're starting over again. Technological improvements is on the list of improvements, uh, possibly a shared computer person maybe with Westfield to do some of our I T, uh, I T work. Uh, high-going dispatch issues, which that's that's a mine-tuning issue, I've been overall very satisfied with it provided with us, you know, a lot of the older officers were used to the way we had it, this is just a little bit different. Technology upgrades will be on my list, bi-cameras probably number one, I know a lot of the officers still don't want to hear those, but as an internal investigator, I can tell you they're phenomenal. They give you that other part of the story that is lost a lot of times. Uh, record keeping, uh, payables would be other technological improvements we'd be looking at. Now, our payroll is archaic at this point, just to put it honestly. Uh, availability of officer mental health counseling was another thing that the officers have brought up. The avail- availability for employee assistance programs and having someone possibly on staff who can talk to them whether the uh, cross-training of officers will be on the list. We have some officers have very specific things they deal with, whether it be records or submissions of important data that is time sensitive. When they're out, they just feel like they can't really take time off if no one else is there and trained to do their job. Uh, the reserve officer program is something we've got to evaluate based on where we are. What it was is knowing what it is at this point in time because of the post and the elimination of the uh, reserve academy a couple of years ago now. Uh, we also talked about some new community programs possibly, and we've tried to run some classes such as the Citizens Police Academy. And we had unfortunately two people sign up, so we might want to look at how to recruit and how we look at, you know, the different types of programs we want to run. Uh, this is one of my, uh, things that I actually brought up would be monthly nighttime hours with the chief. A lot of people do still work daytime. They don't have the ability to come in during the day. So nighttime hours, you know, once a month, I think would be a good thing to try and take care of that. Uh, regular scheduled staff meetings, which would take care of some of the communication issues we had talked about. Uh, family leave had actually come up through a couple of people, although I know that's obviously something that's contractual and have to be bargained. Uh, our policies are in serious need of an update and revision at this point in time. It touched on a couple of years. Um, the ordering list, which, you know, was a problem to the bottom five officers depending on where we are with our staffing. Right now, we're in a good spot, but we're going to be losing some more people here shortly. So every time you order in, uh, the order is sort of ramp up. You know, the, the younger guys start getting a little bit edgy that they're going to be ordered in on a, on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you.
So what is the single largest, biggest challenge facing the department? And what would you do to face this challenge?
Largest problem facing the department? I don't think there's really a huge problem right now that needs to be addressed tomorrow. This would be something, again, that I would sit down with everyone if I was appointed and we, you know, we go through it and basically rank things that they see as problems on this list of things here that I just went over. You know, probably the communication would be on the top of that list. That's the one that would potentially cause the most problem. It's probably his own fix, quite honestly.
Thank you.
With the full implementation of the post, what problems have you seen in regards to how it affects the day-to-day work and social development? And the metanormative?
So with posts, I don't think a lot of the officers are affected very much in the least. It's really the upper management that's affected by it, uh, the chief, the lieutenant, uh, the administrative sergeant. We're the ones who basically have to go in and we've got to do the information reporting. We've got to do the entries. Um, you know, the chief's got to do attestations. Um, I've gone in there, I've got to enter the I A's. Got to, you know, do that in a timely, timely manner. They've got to be in within two days of submission. And we've got, you know, ninety days, a couple of conclusions, conclusions of recent. We've got an asterisk extension. You get up to a year. You've got to basically send all that information back. You've got to stamp it, certify it, go through everything they do. But for the general officer, there's, there's really not a lot in there. Uh, the new officers, like we just hired one, there's a whole new way you've got to go in there. You've actually got to do a questionnaire on them, an interview with them, a background check on. That's, that's all new. That wasn't something that had been done in the past. But again, day-to-day, all the training and everything that the officers do, that's the same training they've been doing in the past. It's just entered in there and signed off on. They're really not doing anything now.
Improvement and retention have become a huge issue within the law enforcement world. What do you think can be done at a department and town level to encourage people to pursue a career in law enforcement?
So retention, yeah, it's, it's an issue. This is one of the things I was thinking a lot on my way over here. Um, I know, like I said, a lot of the departments, the West Springfield's, the Springfield's, Chickaby's, they're losing officers quite a bit and being able to fill those positions has been tough for them. You know, they've got, we'll say, ten spots open and they're lucky if they get three applicants for those jobs. We've been very lucky here. Um, we filled four in the last year. And I think we got, you know, an outstanding group of four officers. They wanted to come here. We didn't have to really recruit them. The department, you know, name itself was what brought them in here. You know, it has a lot to do with the reputation of the department, has a lot to do with the community, how the community supports the officers. And, you know, to some degree, it's money too, but you know, if you meet those other two goals, if you take a little bit less money to work in a good community, you're probably gonna do it. Um, as far as getting additional people to come here, I know the patrolman just signed a pretty good contract. You know, that's gotta be a positive for anyone looking at this department. We do have probably one, if not two people we're going to be hiring here. One for Sergeant Miles, possibly, uh, some of the fellow S R O position. So like I said, up to this point in time, we've really had no issue attracting people. People still want to come here. It is attractive to them. Um, might we look at, you know, advertising or something like that? It's not a bad idea. It may be something we have to do in the future depending on how many officers we have. But to fill one here and one there, I think we're, we're in really good shape just based on, you know, the department and then the community's reputation as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
Lieutenant, you touched on this, but this will give you an opportunity to flush this out. Officer mental health and wellness has become a topic of great interest and importance as witnessed by the focus M P T C put on this topic in the past several years of training. How do you think you can promote officer health and safety? And how do, how would you handle a situation where possible intervention is needed with an officer who is showing signs of a possible breakdown?
So you are correct. The M P T C has made that a topic the last couple of years, I would say. So they've offered different, different classes, mental, uh, health they've had, uh, had, I'm trying to remember what's on the elements working. I think I've been to three different classes with some of the officers for some of these mental health aspects. Um, I did touch on it earlier, you know, some of the officers had said they would like to have someone on staff to, you know, deal with mental health issues. Um, I don't know if that's, you know, something that's feasible at this point in time. We really haven't looked that far into it right now. We're actually trying to sign the B H N or something, some of the, some of the Westfield ads for the general population. Um, I don't want to clear counselors actually does have side business that deals with law enforcement and firefighters, military, other first responders. Um, again, I am in favor of sending as many people as I can to some of these classes, but we've got to have the, you know, personnel to cover the shifts at the same time. They, they only offer them so often. It's not like there's ten of these available. They come locally, you know, once or twice a training year, which is the same thing as this one here. As far as someone coming to me, I've been in that situation. We've had some people who've, you know, encountered some, some issue because of the work that we do. And we've been able to, you know, bring them to the employee assistance program, get them the help that they need, and get them on the right track to coming back to work, you know, with as, with as little issue as possible.
Thank you.
Please describe your views on community policing as well as your history of participation with community engagement. How will you put forth and maintain a positive policing presence in the community?
So community policing is something, I hate to say it was a fad, but it was something that the government put a lot of money into back in the time period when I started here. They used to have community policing symposiums where it was three days up in New Hampshire that everyone would get together. Uh, those days and those limes have since dried up. You know, they say that community policing is more than programs. It has to be a philosophy for your department. It's something that has to be, you know, right, right at the core of what you do. In the time that I've been here, I've, you know, I've participated in the particular programs that we've had, whether it's been instructor in the Citizens Police Academy over the years. Uh, I've gone to different community type events as I mentioned earlier. I've done the, you know, the, the Christmas parades, the, you know, the school events, I've done the Rotary events. I've done the senior citizen events, pretty much anything where we've had a representative go in the last three or four years has usually been they driving one of the, one of the people to go. You know, I think it's, it's very important to get out there and be seen in the community. They should know who their officers are. They should have a good idea that, you know, they care about what's going on in town. And, you know, in my case, they, they do live here. So I think it's, it's very important to get back to the community that should be living.
Police departments need to have strong ties to their communities. The citizens of Southwick have a great relationship with the police department. How could you cultivate that relationship with the citizens of Southwick to benefit the department and town?
I would agree. We, we have a lot of support from the town. I mean, you could see that a couple of years ago, we had the I support the Southwick Police Department signs up all over town. And I think it was the Rotary Club was, uh, behind those signs. Um, you know, usually a week doesn't go by that we get some form of letter from someone who was happy with the services they received, however small those services may have been. Uh, you know, just thanking us for, you know, coming to help their loved one up off the floor or stop by for the lemonade stand or, you know, stop at one of these senior events. You know, the, the public is very appreciative of what we do. So, you know, I say that we continue to do these things and, you know, we look at possibly expanding that to more, you know, more programs, more stops at, you know, local, possibly the church or, you know, some of the nonprofits in town.
I have a follow-up question.
Sure.
Um, how would, take a drink. Go ahead. Um, how would you engage with the youth more? Do you have any thoughts on that?
So right now, we've got an intern program. Um, we've had that for a number of years now. I think actually Sergeant Wes Scott was the first intern we ever had. So I'll probably date him a little bit if he's in the world, but you know, it's good to get the kids to come in and see what we actually do, see what everything's all about, especially if they have some form of interest in what we do. Because it is a different world. What you see on TV is not, you know, not real. This is the easiest way to put it. You know, I'd also like to run some, you know, cadet-type program or an academy specifically for the youth in town. You know, hopefully we get a better turnout for that than we got for the other dome when we tried running. But, you know, to be able to go in and cultivate potential new officers coming in, I mean, that's a couple of things that would be very beneficial and get a couple of those kids possibly to, you know, entertain a career in law enforcement.
Good day.
Yep.
Thank you.
Lieutenant, how do you expect to enhance the role of chief internally? And externally with the public and other agencies? And do you have any specific new goals or objectives in mind for leading and managing the department?
So again, I, I think I want to continue with what previous chiefs have done here. Now, we've got an outstanding, excellent reputation in, in the area here. You know, each chief has added a little bit more and a little bit more as we've gone along. Uh, you know, the current chief has, has done quite a few things with the building. We've got a new drone program now. Um, you know, for me, the things that I'd like to do, again, I'd like to update our policies and procedures. I'd like to, you know, look at some new technology, you know, modernize our, uh, our payroll, modernize some of our record keeping. I'd like to basically get the things that the other chiefs didn't get to.
So as a follow-up, so how will the Southwick Police Department be better in the future if you are selected as the new chief?
Just trying to think out my response here. I think, I think it will be better in terms of, again, moving forward, being able to modernize a lot of the things that we do. This will be able to, you know, speed up some of our record keeping. It'll be able to be easily, easier searched. Um, again, just, I want to be able to continue on with a place where people want to work and people are happy, where people want to come here.
Thank you.
You're almost there.
I don't think I asked a big question, sir.
In the role of chief, it will be necessary for you to have a unique role in matters such as staffing, labor negotiations, and enforcement of town policy. Please explain how you will divorce yourself from your former role and personal opinions to facilitate the best and fairest outcomes for the department, the individual staff, and the town staff affairs.
I hate to ask you every bit again.
I, I knew you were about to. In the role of chief, it will be necessary for you to have a unique role in matters such as staffing, labor negotiations, and enforcement of town policy. How will you separate yourself from your former role and How will you separate yourself from your former role and personal opinion to facilitate the best and fairest outcomes for the department, the staff, and the taxpayers?
So, I mentioned earlier, I was the president, uh, head vice president for, or handled vice president for a number of years. So, everything I did back then was to benefit the members of the police union. Since I moved from sergeant, I was sergeant then. Since I moved from sergeant to lieutenant, my job and outlook is different. I am an administrator at this point in time. I worked in concert with the chief. So, the things that I mentioned, everything for, you know, the patrol body hasn't been, you know, the issue within three years now. I've got to think more about the management thing, management side of things. You know, how does what's done affect the long term? How does it affect what happens down the road? How does it affect each and every little thing within the department? If there's, you know, negotiations and something is given to the union, how does that affect something down the avenue line, whether it's, you know, more money, whether it's a specific benefit? There are repercussions somewhere else. What do those look like and how do they affect, you know, the town, the department? The cash flow, I guess we'll say, of the department? But from my point of view at this point in time, most of what I do has already been divorced from what I was doing as one of the patrol union members. I'm all over the union. I am outside the union. This is why all my contracts is based on theirs.
We only have two more pages of questions. That concludes the question and answer portion of this this interview. Lieutenant, do you have any any commentary or statements you wish to make at this time?
I think we covered most of them. Let me just take a look. I think the only thing I would I would add to this are just some of my duties presently as lieutenant. Now, obviously, I'm the immediate supervisor for the department sergeants. I'm tasked with their efficiency and their effectiveness. Some of the duties that I do are the department training coordinator, the internal affairs investigator, the night report reporting officer, the postal liaison, the K S F T C liaison, the national news enforcement reporting officer, police ID program administrator, code red administrator, office in charge of front desk, civic maintenance. Again, I've been involved with the safety plan and supervision of a number of local and national events that have come through town. I also do townwide messaging with Code Red. And I'm in charge of department staffing and approval of all department reports. I think that's really all I wanted to add.
Any other questions for follow-up? We're all done.
I think I'm all set.
I'm all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do have this covered, uh, this topic coming up under our agenda tonight. We may, depending on the hour, we may or may not discuss this topic again tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're thinking exactly the same thing. Folks, we're going to take a five-minute break and we'll kind of come back at, uh, seven twenty-five. Muted, but not paused. We use the same same ones for the second candidate. Yes?
No, I don't have them, but if you're getting them.
Nope, we're good. Are you okay with using your?
Yeah, I have my little notepad, so.
I wrote all over mine, but I'll write in a different color or something.
Do you want some black paper?
No, I'm good. I have. Thank you.
Good evening. How are you?
How are you, Sergeant?
Good, good. Thank you.
Okay. Apparently, we have about three hundred questions for you.
Okay.
We'll, and then, um, we're going to ask them surly. We're going to go one at a time, ask you a question. Uh, don't be afraid to ask us to repeat the question or if you need any other details.
Okay.
And at the end of the question period, uh, there'll be an opportunity for you to make any statements or add any information that you feel would be beneficial. Sound reasonable?
Understood, yes.
You ready to go?
Ready to go.
You got a full water there? You're all set? You got some water there? Okay. And we had an odd number of questions, so we're going to start off with with me. Jason.
Our name, Sergeant. Question. All right. Please describe what immediate steps you would take to prepare and coordinate efforts in the event of a major disaster such as a tornado requiring all manpower on deck? It's actually kind of a two-part. To determine who would you call in what order, including SEMA. Is that supposed to be there?
Oh, why is it there?
All right, thank you. I was going to repeat it for me, please.
Of course, we don't have anybody else. Please describe what immediate steps you would take to prepare and coordinate efforts in the event of a major disaster such as a tornado requiring all manpower on deck?
Okay, uh, first, we're going to alert our command staff, um, put everybody, get everybody inside. Um, we're going to continuously watch um, any and all weather forecasts that we can find. Um, we will bring in as many personnel available. Uh, we'll coordinate our efforts with the fire department, uh, make sure their their staffing is is fully staffed. In the event of a tornado or something that affects you, we're going to, we're going to lose power. We're going to lose all our communications. Um, so we're going to coordinate all our efforts into the the initial blast, um, whatever whatever's coming first. Um, then we're going to make sure we have a a location, uh, where we can all beat, uh, incident command, uh, type of a location. And then we're just going to sit it out. We're going to wait and see what happens. Um, as it goes through, we are going to coordinate our efforts into check for injuries. Uh, we are going to, um, try to keep open lines of communication with Eversource, uh, find out what kind of damage is done, uh, when it can be surveyed. Um, first and foremost, obviously, you know, we're going to try to have a rescue mission, uh, cause what kind of damage our town sustained. Um, and yeah, um, from there, it's just going to go into a recovery mode. We'll work with, uh, whatever agency is available, uh, able to provide any kind of assistance, and we'll just go from there.
I'm going to interrupt just for one second with a bit of procedural housekeeping. Sergeant, there's a microphone in front of you. If you could push the button once so that it turns green and use that so the folks in the room uh, can hear what you're saying.
I saw the red light, so I assumed it was, um.
It was the the red? No, the green light is working way better. Thank you. Sorry for an interruption. Please.
That's at the end of the question. You're all set, Sergeant?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then you have the follow-up.
Oh, that's actually part of this question. So, all right, suppose another agency or a subordinate fails to follow your command. What do you do immediately and what would you do in the aftermath?
In the event of a storm like this or an incident like this? Well, we're going to deal, we're we're going to continue on. We're going to deal with, uh, with with what we have on our hands. Um, as far as any kind of orders that are disobeyed or procedures that aren't followed, um, we will bring that up at another time. Um, when it's safe to do so and when everything is back to to running quietly and running smoothly.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Sergeant, what makes you the most qualified applicant for this position?
Well, I strongly believe in the past twenty-three years, from the day I walked in the in the door of this police department, um, I've been afforded many other work opportunities that most police officers in the town of Southwick aren't afforded. Um, I started as a patrol officer. Um, I was assigned as the K nine officer. I worked with, uh, K nine partner for ten years, um, which brought me all over Western Massachusetts. Um, I've worked with federal and both local narcotics units, executing search warrants in, um, the bigger cities and towns, Springfield, Chicago, Ohio, um, places where a small-town police officer never goes. Um, after K nine, after ten years of K nine, I was indeed promoted to sergeant, went back as, uh, patrol, as a patrol sergeant, um, leading the, up to the detective bureau. The detective bureau was a very eye-opening experience. I quickly learned you could not work in the detective bureau as an investigator with the same mindset as a patrol officer. It was a completely different job. It was quite rejuvenating, actually. You're halfway through your career, things become a little bit stale. This was like a fresh start. Fortunately for me, I had one of the best teachers. Then Sergeant Landis, now Chief Landis, worked in that office for quite some time. He is well-known throughout western Massachusetts as being a very well-organized, very thorough professional investigator. So I was very fortunate to have him as a teacher. While working as the investigator, it is my job to investigate any and all crimes incidents that occur within the town of Southwick that are considered serious in nature. I also work with, assist, or guide our patrol officers with their investigations. Also serving in this capacity, I work as a sexual assault, rape investigator, narcotics investigator. I investigate all fatal motor vehicle accidents, any deaths that occur within the, within the town of Southwick that are considered suspicious or, or out of the norm, such as an overdose, suicide, and things like that. While working in this capacity, I've worked with numerous other law enforcement officials from both local and state police departments, federal agencies, including the FBI, DEA, the ATF, Homeland Security. I've learned so much from working with all these investigators. I've established contacts with all these investigators. I'm able to contact them each and every day with whatever needs we need. I work very closely with the district attorney's office in both the district and superior court levels. It's just been, you know, since day one, I feel that I've actually been being groomed for this position. It's led us, it's led, I believe it's led me up to this point in time where we are today.
Thank you.
I think you need to hold the microphone up. What was your worst day in a supervisory position?
Worst day in a supervisory position? Any day that we have a tragic event in this town is a bad day. In the past few years, we've had several. When you work in a supervisory position, it's, you know, especially in the detective bureau as the investigator investigating these crimes, it's my job to organize these crimes, to gather the facts of these crimes, to pull in the assets that we, that are needed to investigate these crimes, such as other agencies. And of course, we have to notify and notify the family. These are always the bad days. These are the days that I dread. You know, as a patrol officer, sometimes you are forced to serve or have to do these notifications. But anytime involving something like this, the heartache that is spread, that people are forced to endure, it takes a toll on you. It's something you have to live with yourself for the rest of your life. But you have to gather, put yourself together and move forward. I don't know if you're looking for any particular events.
That's good. That's good.
All right, Sergeant. What have you done over the course of your career to prepare yourself to be the chief of this department?
I've worked very hard. As I, as I said, working in so many different capacities, working with so many different law enforcement officials, so many different investigators, detectives. You, you learn to deal with each and every situation, no matter what the seriousness of the situation is. I was able to, like I said, as, I've been very fortunate here in the town of Southwick. I've been able to have this real-life experience on so many different levels. Also, there's other things I've done within the police department. For numerous years now, I've taken on the role of creating, maintaining our our vehicles. It's my job to budget these vehicles, to purchase these vehicles, to outfit these vehicles, and to maintain these vehicles. Each and every year, we do our budgets for all the maintenance to outfit them. Yeah, it's Chief Landis. He's included me numerous times each and every year, several different areas of our budgeting. So it's just, it's just twenty-three years of experience and taking in as much as possible can. Each and every officer, in the course of their duties, attend, attend trainings. It's, it's what we do. We do it on a continuing, continuing basis. It never stops. And it just builds. It's their building blocks, and it just keeps going.
All right, thank you.
Sergeant, what is your management philosophy slash style? And how do you resolve conflict?
Well, I think my management style is, is team. I believe that it has been vital, it's very important to build a culture within the police department where everybody matters. Everybody has an opinion. Everybody's an equal. One term that I, I do not like to hear and never hear coming out of me is subordinate. That is just one word. It's, it's it's demoralizing. I'm sorry, could you repeat the, I'm losing my train of thought?
What is your management philosophy slash style? And how do you resolve conflict?
Okay. By including everybody, everyone has an opinion. Everybody matters. Even as small as our police department is, there still are twenty-three, twenty-four different opinions. Nobody, you can't make everybody happy all the time. I think by including everybody, keeping the lines of communication open, keeping everything transparent. There, there has to be communication. When there's conflict, we have to talk about it. You can't fix problems that you don't know about. A lot of times, people will get in groups and they'll talk about it, and you hear it through the grapevine. There's gotta be an open line of communication. So, yeah, just, just communicate, communication, being transparent.
Thank you.
Without specific examples or names in answering this question, do you feel that necessary and warranted discipline is consistently applied in your department? Do you feel positive recognition is rightly and consistently applied? And how will you ensure that those are always consistently and equitably applied without inherent or intentional biases?
Well, again, the goal would be to create and maintain a culture within the police department where everybody has, like I said, where, where, you know, everybody's included. It's a team. You have to be a team player. This has to start at the top. It has to start at the command staff. There has to be a sense, there has to be accountability. I'm sorry, could you repeat? That was a long question.
It was. It was. Do you feel that necessary and warranted, warranted discipline is consistently applied in the department? And do you feel positive recognition is rightly and consistently applied? And how will you ensure that that remains without inherent or intentional biases?
Positive recognition is a must. People do a good job. They need to be, they need to be told. Discipline, you know, we're, we're all adults. For the most part, you know, our police department has been very good. We have rules, regulations, policies, and procedures that we follow. For the most part, they're followed. Do mistakes happen? Sure. I believe, you know, it would depend on the event or the incident that we're talking about, something very carelessly or foolishly done where a disciplinary action has to be imposed. If it does, then it has to be. You know, you would try to avoid that. Keeping everybody accountable on the same level, I think is vital. Everybody, again, pulling everybody together. It goes back to communication, being transparent. So, yeah, I mean, discipline has to, you know, if it has to be imposed, it has to be imposed. But I think positive reinforcement is, is, is a much more way to go to keep people, you know, doing what they're supposed to do.
Is there a gray area into which either could be withheld, the discipline or the praise?
I think depending on the situation, depending on the severity of what we're talking about, you know, it may came, it may come down to maybe some retraining instead of a disciplinary action. It may come to, you know, it, it, what was their intention? Were there good intentions and a mistake was made? You know, we, we talk about it, we correct it. We move forward.
How will you prepare the bench of future officers and leaders in the Southwick Police Department?
You know, one of the decisions, what, it came to mind when I was making the decision to apply to this position. Jason, I think you've been attested to this. Each and every officer, as you, as you start your career in law enforcement, you either attend school or you attend a police academy. That, that builds a foundation. All that does is build a foundation. You cannot learn this job from the book. This is something you learn on the street, and it takes years to learn. And as you come aboard, you look towards your veteran officers for guidance and their expertise. And that will go on for years. What I finally realized after, you know, Chief Landis retiring, that's the end of an era for us. It is now our job to train all our new staff, our officers. It's more, it's an obligation. That's what kind of pushed me into, into making a move here. We train our officers as, as we go. Obviously, each and every day is a new learning experience. I can honestly say, in twenty, over twenty-three years of doing this job, I still things, still see things every day I haven't seen before. It's always a learning experience. So it's, yeah, I mean, your veteran officers are always gonna guide, assist, and help your officers into, uh, into new positions, new responsibilities, and it keeps us moving forward.
Thank you.
Given your experience with the Southwick PD, what do you think the greatest strengths of the department are? What areas, weaknesses, or skill sets of the Southwick Police Department could use improvement? And how would you address those areas? And lastly, are there any current strengths or opportunities that might be brought in?
Okay, it's an awfully long question. One thing with the Southwick Police Department, we've always had a very good relationship with our community. It's very important. Back with, when we went through the George Floyd time area back then, many surrounding cities and towns, police departments across the country. We're all having very difficult times with the community. They were being attacked, both physically. It's, it's just, the town of Southwick, we didn't have very many issues. They stuck by us. That told me a lot. That told me that we were doing things correctly. We try to keep a very open communication with our town, try to be transparent with our town. That's why I think it's really vital to have these, our community policing events. That was one, that's one thing that I would like to continue, like, to see these things grow to keep bringing our, our community into our police department. To be transparent, to see, to show them how we do things, why we do things. It, it's just, it's beneficial to all of us. Second part of that question, please?
What areas, weaknesses, or skill sets of the Southwick Police Department could use improvement, and how would you address those areas?
You know, we're always, we're always struggling with staffing issues. And when this occurs, all of our programs suffer. We've been trying to do a cadet program, which I think is, it's an outstanding program. The city of Westfield just graduated or appointed two full-time police officers that came through their cadet program. These young men started as children. They were well-versed, they were well-brewed, and they slid right into these positions. They turned out to be fine young men, I know both of them. We just had a RAD program for kids, which I wasn't a big, really supporter of RAD until I saw this. It was actually outstanding. I mean, these kids had, not only did the kids relate and communicate with the police officers, you'll saw their parents. I'd love to see that continue. I'd like to see it continue in different age groups to keep these kids involved. It's things like that that suffer when we don't have staffing. We're a small police department. We lose two or three people, now our ships are, you know, we're struggling to fill our ships. So that takes away from everything else. If, if the guys are being forced to, or ordered into working shifts, they're not gonna wanna participate in anything, any extra activities outside of, you know, their, their shifts. They do want some time off, and many of them have families and are having babies. So it's very difficult to maintain these programs or to get them up and running. I would definitely like to see our staffing needs improved. We're still running a two-man minimum. We've been running a two-man minimum for years. I know the, it's, the three-man minimum has come up. It's gonna take a lot of work to pull that off, and I don't see it happening anytime soon, hopefully in the future. But yeah, I mean, it, it usually comes down to manpower. But we'll just keep, we'll keep trying. We'll keep moving forward.
Okay, that's all.
Yes.
What is the biggest challenge with this? What is the biggest, biggest challenge facing the department, and what would you do to face that challenge?
Again, staffing. We're always, we're, we always seem to be struggling. We, this, this past year, we were able to add to our staff, which was fantastic for a few months. But since then, we've had a couple of injuries. We have some, two officers, or one officer out. She just had a baby. She's expected to come back soon. But it's always seems to be, everything revolves around staffing. It's always an issue, and it's not just us, it's any small police department. You don't have the staff of the media officers to keep filling and rotating people into different roles and positions. So the department, our size, if you lose two or three people, you know, it causes a lot of trouble, it causes a lot of trouble. So definitely staffing issues, for sure.
Do you have any thoughts on how you can lessen those issues?
Well, yeah. You know, it's not a matter of bringing people in. Of course, you know, it's, it's, it's the size of town, you know? We have a small police department, you know, we're not budgeted for all these extra officers. Police reform has really tightened the ropes with us. With the police reform, we've lost our reserve staff, which we depended on, reserve officers. Would work extra patrol shifts, they would work our road jobs, our parades, or any kind of details like that. So losing our reserve staff was big. If we could somehow, you know, create a part-time discipline with full-time officers, I think that would be good. I don't know if that would be something, you know, contracted, that would, you know, because with being contractual, how that would definitely play out. I know it's kind of the same as having reserve officers, but they would be full-trained. So just, just gotta play with different ways to bring in some people, maybe on a part-time basis, to relieve some of these, some of this tension, some of the struggles.
Sarge, with the full implementation of post, what types of problems have you seen in regards to how it affects the day-to-day workings of the department and the men and women of it?
How it affects the day-to-day workings of the department and the men and women of it?
I don't know if I would say POST itself affects the daily operations. I know when POST was still, was first implemented, um, officers were afraid. Basically to go out on the street, they were afraid that, you know, obviously, you know, one little complaint, um. Sent to POST is going to get them decertified. You know. Each and every day. A police officer is going to make a citizen or, or somebody angry, whether it's with a speeding ticket. Or, you know, a, a domestic situation where one of the parties is arrested. Um, they're going to complain. Um, so officers were, they were afraid that these complaints were going to be, you know, affect them, uh, on a regular basis. However, it didn't turn out like that. The, the complaints aren't being sent to POST as much as we thought they were. And if they did, POST is very good about weeding them out. Um, they do understand what police officers do on a daily basis and how sometimes it's going to upset people. Um, so I don't really see any big or major, uh, inconveniences or, or, or lasting effects. Uh, since POST has been implemented. Um, actually, I think it's been running pretty smooth. Um, some of their investigations. Um, that we, we've dealt with, you know, they come down the pipe. They're, they're, they're very open-minded and, and they do what's right. They're just not handing down, uh, or decertified police officers for every little thing that comes through the, through the door.
Okay, thanks. Recruitment and retention have become a huge issue within the, the law enforcement world. What do you think can be done at a department and town level to encourage people to pursue a career in law enforcement?
Well, recruitment is always an issue. Uh, retention, we've never had much of an issue here in the town of Southwick. And I think that says a lot for our department, says a lot for our, our, our leaders. Um, for the most part, uh, I can, I could probably count on one hand how many police officers have actually left the police department since I've been here and gone to another department. In fact, uh, yeah, not very many at all. Recruitment is a, is a different story, um, especially nowadays. Uh, years ago, when I first began this job, these jobs were not readily available. You definitely had to kick, scream and scratch, uh, to obtain some of these jobs. So now, um, it, things are a, a little bit tighter, um, so you got to. Really be careful of, of who you're bringing aboard. You know, we have a police department that's running smoothly. Uh, you have high morale, you have a culture within the police department that is satisfying and it's, it. It's created a positive workplace. Um, the re, like I said, the retention people, if people come and they stay. Uh, this is a great town. It's a great place to work. Um, I think it's a great place for people to come and raise their family. I think our schools, um, are, are wonderful. We're, we're, we're having a little bit of a. An incident right now, but we'll pull together and we will work through this and we'll get through it. Um, so coming to this town as a police officer. Um, it's just, it's a great place to work, you know, it's, it's, it's not a big city, but it's busy enough where it keeps these guys going and it keeps them satisfied. And, uh, as far as, you know, you, you keep the morale high. Through, through, you know, transparency, I mean, the communication. Um, if people feel left out, uh, they're going to get angry. But, you know, we don't really have those kind of issues. Um, like I said, it goes back on our leadership. It's, it's a great place to work.
Officer mental health and wellness has become a topic of great interest and importance. Importance as witnessed by the focus MPTC put on this topic. How do you think you could promote officer health and safety? And how would you handle a situation where possible interventions needed with an officer showing signs of a possible breakdown?
Yeah, um. These are things that, you know, these are cases that have to be handled on an individual basis. Everybody seems to deal with these situations differently. Um, I myself, in the past twenty-three years, I, I have dealt with quite a few of, um, some pretty traumatic. Um, events. Um, even more so in the past five, or in the past five, six years as working with Detective Bureau. Um, I myself has, have found myself, um, kind of slipping away into a dark place. I worked through my, through of myself, um. With, with, with health and fitness. Um, I brought myself back physically and mentally, um, through training. Um, it worked out very well. Each and every officer, like I said, handles these things in a different way. It affects it differently. Some officers are able to talk, talk about it with their fellow officers and work through it. Some aren't. Um, and you can see this, they start drifting away. Uh, you can, they're not as happy as they were. Um, they don't talk as much. Um, so when you see this, when you notice this, it's important to talk to them. And to give them the help that they need. And if that means they need to, you know, some outside counseling, some, uh, any, any kind of, uh. Intervention like that, you gotta get it for them. You're gonna do what you can. Um, a lot of these officers are able to work through this, um, just by talking to somebody. So, it's, it's very difficult when you're dealing with, with mental illness. Um, it affects work life, it affects home life. Um, so you just got to look for the cues.
Sergeant, please describe your views on community policing, as well as your history of participation with community engagement. And how will you put forth and maintain a positive policing presence in the community?
Community policing, uh, like I said before. Um, I think it's vital to keep a open line of communication and being transparent with our community. Um, it's only beneficial to us as well. Um, letting them know, bringing them inside the police department, getting to know the police officers, getting to know, uh. To see what we do, how we do it, why we do it. Um, it creates a better understanding for everybody. Um, I love the, different programs, um, that we have. Uh, but again, like I said, we just did our first RAB class for, for kids. I wasn't a very big proponent of this until I actually saw it and I thought it was absolutely outstanding. Um, so I'd love to continue with that. Uh, again, the cadet program, Sergeant Lanis and I. Chief Lanis and I have been talking about this for quite some time. Uh, we just have not been able to, to implement it. Um, so I would definitely like to see that through. I think that's an outstanding program. Our Citizens Police Academy was always very popular. Um, we've been trying to, to get that back on board. COVID really took a toll on that. Um, so I would definitely like to keep working on that and, and get that up and running. Um, there's, there's smaller things that we do that have been outstanding. Uh, at the end of this month, we have our second annual pancake breakfast for the fire department. Um, we teamed up with Malicious and it raises money for the food pantry. We, we opened up our door and we created a, uh, an open house, uh, along with the fire department. Um, during this pancake breakfast. It wa, it was an absolute success. People loved it. It was, it was fantastic. Um, I would definitely like to see that happen every year. Um, so just different ways, we have, we have to keep those, those lines of communication open. Uh, the transparency has to remain open. Um, and just. To bring people into the police department. Um, so I look forward to finding different ways, uh. And creating different events. This year, I would love to see, uh, you know, we always miss it, usually due to staffing issues, uh. Night Out Against Crime. Again, it's a night, it's an open house type, uh, program, you know, it brings people in, people love it. Um, the more we can introduce the people to our police officers, to get to know them on a first-hand basis. To, to show them what we do, how we do it, why we do it. It's just beneficial to all.
Thank you. I think this is in line with the last question as well. Police departments used to have strong ties, need to have strong ties to their communities. The citizens of Southwick have a great relationship with the police department. How could you cultivate that relationship with the citizens of Southwick to benefit the department and the town?
Uh, as I just stated, um, keeping the lines of communication, being transparent, letting our, our, our community know what we're doing and why we're doing it. Um, different programs, our team, like, we just talked about it, yes, um, continuing with our community policing events. Um, the more we can get people into our police department, the better it is. Um, getting our officers out there and, and different, you know, these parades, the farm parade is outstanding. People love that parade. They love seeing the police officers out there. Um, I'd like to see that grow. Um, we lost our fireman's, uh, carnival. I think that was a, a major event. That was a, a, a great time. And, you know, everybody got to talk, everybody, uh. You, you, you know, just to get, to get to know the officers. Um, there is a, a program or an event I've been, I've been stewing up for the last couple of years. Um, working along with the school department, the, uh. Kind of a Christmas event. I'd like to bring in, uh, aboard, you know, the fire department, uh. The SRS, uh. I don't know if it's their actual, their choir or their band. Um, it's a big Christmas event, you know, um, out in the field. Um, I think it would be a great community policing event. I haven't, I don't have the details. I did speak to, uh, music teacher at the high school. He was really on board. Um, I'd like to, you know, bring the town, we, it'd have to be a whole group effort. Um, but I think it would be a great time and, 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 and bring everybody together.
Thank you.
How do you expect to enhance the role of chief internally and externally with the public and other agencies? Do you have any specific new goals or objectives in mind for leading and managing the department?
As far as the police chief, the chief of police and, and, and citizens of the Southwick, um, you need to get out there. You need to be out there with your, with your staff. You need to be out there with your officers. You need to, you, again, bring them in to meet you as well. Um, you have to keep an open door, you know, if, if somebody has an, an issue or a problem, you can help them. You know, you yourself take care of it. The second half of that, I'm sorry.
Do you have any specific new goals or objectives in mind for leading and managing the department?
You know, uh, Chief Lanis and I. We, it's been very fortunate, we, we've shared very similar views on the direction of the police department. Um, I think, you know, uh, Chief Bishop started it, you know, we've kind of changed things around. Morale has been going up over the years. Um, Chief Lanis has laid down the building blocks. I would like to continue with that. And I think can, uh, like, what I mean, continue with that is. Keeping the lines of communication open with our staff. Um, I think we can improve on that. Um, just talking around with your people, um, it's always seems to, the, the topic of communication seems to come up. Um, I want to build a team. I want everybody to be a team player. I want everybody to be equal. Um, I want everyone to be heard and have their, uh, their opinions, uh, taken into consideration. I think if we can keep those lines open, uh, we can keep being, moving forward. I'd like to, you know, to keep morale, um, at an all-time high to, you know. All of us have to, we all go to work. We spend the majority of our days at our jobs. Um, there's nothing worse than going to work and, and not being happy. Um, earlier in, in my, in the early days, before I got into law enforcement, I did, I worked for a shop. It was a family-owned shop. It was owned by two brothers. They used to fight all the time. Um, they would argue and yell and it would run off into the shop. And I couldn't remember, I, I, I remember clearly saying. You know, if I was ever in a position of where I had my own business or in a, a management role. I, I would do whatever I could to prevent this. It was just dreadful. Um, get up in the morning and you dread going to work. Uh, you take time off. So now production suffers. Um, and, and law enforcement, if, if you're having those issues, it's going to run off into the community. You know, your police house is going to be miserable. They're going to treat people miserably. It's just, it's, it's, it's a, it's a domino effect. Um, so I think it's just very important, uh, you know, keeping those lines of communication open. And everybody matters. Um, you know, everyone's opinion matters.
As a follow-up. How will the Southwick Police Department be better in the future if you are selected as the new chief?
Again, uh. Morale is, is, is a very, uh, big thing for me. Um, again, I want to. You know, we, we have, morale is good right now in the police department. Um, I would like to take it to the next level. I think we can improve on it and we're going to do that with, with, by maintaining those lines of communication that I keep talking about. I think we can grow with it. I, I, I want, I want people to be happy to come to work. I want to create that positive, uh, uh, atmosphere, even within the walls of that police department. It's only going to benefit, uh, now in the police department, it's going to benefit the town, um, as well.
Just so you know, it's the last. In the role of chief, it will be necessary for you to have a unique role in matters such as staffing, labor negations, and, and, excuse me. Labor negotiations and enforcement of town policies. Please explain how you will separate yourself from your former role and personal opinions to facilitate. The best and fairest outcomes for the department, individual staff, and the town's taxpayers.
I believe that's going to be a learn, you know, a learning, uh, process, um, as in any position, um. Going from patrol officer to the tech bureau. Um, again, as I stated before. Um, it, it, I quickly learned, it was a completely different job. I could not go in there and work as a patrol officer. So it took time. It took time to learn the job. It took time to readjust, um, and move forward. As chief, yeah, um, you know. Uh, just to, to encourage everybody, to keep a happy, uh, like I said, the positive reinforcement. Um, the positive atmosphere, as long as everybody feels like they're warranted or they're, uh. Their opinion matters. Um, we can keep a positive, uh. A, a, a positive atmosphere. We can work together. Um, as far as, you know, uh, negotiations and things like that. Um, to, to separate yourself, it's going to be very difficult. Um, but to encourage your, your, to encourage your staff to work as hard as your staff. Um, you know, and we work through everything together. Yeah, I mean, it, 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 it's going to be work in progress. Um, it's something I'm going to have to learn and I'm, and I'm willing, I'm willing, able, ready to, ready to, to do so.
That ends the questions. So Sergeant, is there any information that you'd like to share with us or any statements you'd like to make?
Well, I could get on some of it, um, but, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank you both for taking the time and putting in the efforts to choosing Southwick as our chief. Um, I know these decisions are never easy, so thank you very much. Um, Douglas, I sat in this chair just over six and a half years ago seeking, uh, promotion in front of the board. Um, at the conclusion of that interview, you asked me a question. I don't remember verbatim, but it was in somewhere in the lines of where you see yourself in five or 10 years. The answer I gave you, uh, which was right here, serving the town, uh, the residents of the town of Southwick, that's my ability. Um, I knew that wasn't the, the answer you were particularly looking for. So, I'd like to take another crack at, but before I do that, I'd like to just quickly do a, a quick recap. Um, just over twenty-three years ago, I came to this, to the town of Southwick seeking a position in law enforcement. I didn't care where it was. I was just, I just wanted to work as a police officer. Southwick was gracious enough to, uh, afford me the opportunity and they appointed me as a reserve police officer. For the next couple of years, I had, uh, like a sponge, I absorbed as much training that was made available to me. Um, I put my, my, my face inside that building as much as I possibly could and so I could be recognized as a go-to. Uh, officer, somebody they could depend on. Um, after a couple of years of this, um, there wasn't in fact some retirements on the horizon. The topic of putting myself through the full-time police academy, um, came up, uh, to. Enhance my chances of obtaining one of those positions. However, this was a very bad, uh, this was a very rough time for me financially. I took on a major family responsibility. I took custody of a young man that was, uh, in between homes and needed a, a steady place to live. Um, I was also trying to go back to school to, uh, finish my degree, so it, it, it was just a lot going on. We weighed the pros and cons and after some conversation, the decision was made to go to the police academy. I was able to scratch up enough money and I became a member, or I enrolled and was a member of thirty-seventh MPFC. Uh, the gamble paid off. Early after graduating. I was in fact, uh, appointed as a full-time police officer here in town, in Southwick. Um, it did not take long to realize that this was home. This was career. This was the place I wanted to be. Not once in twenty-three years did I straight, did I, did I look or even consider looking at another police department. Um, as I mentioned before, I've been very fortunate here in the town of Southwick. I've been afforded so many more work opportunities or, or, or. Being able to, uh, assume different roles than most police officers working for a small home. Again, uh. Twenty, uh, in two thousand and seven, I was appointed as the department canine handler. Um, by the good grace of God, I was, I was paired up with the most amazing canine partner anyone could ever ask for. I don't think I could design a better dog. Jax was absolutely amazing. Um, it did not take long for his reputation as being a phenomenal narcotics detection dog to spread throughout western Massachusetts. Um, our services were requested all over the region. Um, in the early days, as I stated before, um, we did work for a. Um, in the early days, as I stated before, um, we did work for a federal task force, which comprised of, uh, detectives, uh, from other police departments surrounding cities and towns, agents from, uh, DEA and Homeland Security. Of course, in the latter years, we had the opportunity to work with, uh, Chief Landis and retired Chief, uh, Wickari in the Eastern Henry County Narcotics Task Force. Uh, of course, this serving in this role, um, we had a big one in 2014, uh, while executing a search warrant in in the town of, uh, Agwong, our attentions, uh, was pulled away and we were asked to search another storage area. Um, after searching 90 to 100 storage units, Jax hit on one, which yielded, uh, a couple hundred pounds of marijuana and over 1.2 million dollars in cash. Um, it was never confirmed, but I was told that this was the largest cash hit, uh, by a canine in the Commonwealth. Of course, 10 years went by just like that. Um, before you know it, it was over. It was time for Jax to retire. Um, I was faced with yet another agonizing decision, whether to continue with canine or to step down and seek promotion. Seeing that Jax was, uh, still somewhat healthy, he was going to be around for a while. Um, so I just could not, after a lot of consideration, it was just, it just must have been impossible to have uh, another alpha dog at home, and I do have to admit, there was an emotional side to it. I don't think I could, I had the heart to drive away with a, uh, another canine in the car. It was losing, like Jax was washing it from the window. So the decision was made to to step down and seek promotion. A short time later, I was in fact promoted to sergeant. I worked another year as a patrol sergeant, all by myself alone in the car with nobody to talk to, nobody to drool on my uniform, and it's disgusting, and it seemed that I missed it quite a, quite a bit. Um, anyways, uh, another year passed by. I was in fact assigned to the detective bureau. Um, again, I I mentioned it before, um, this was an eye opening experience. Um, I quickly learned you cannot work as an investigator and think with the same mindset as a patrol officer. Um, you know, uh, I mentioned, uh, having the best teacher, uh, I learned so much from Chief Landis, um, I, uh, I can never repay that debt. Um, it was something, it was, it was an eye opening experience. Anyway, serving in this capacity, you know, uh, again, my duties, uh, were to investigate any and all crimes considered serious in nature in the town of Southwick, uh, to assist, oversee, or, uh, work with, uh, patrol officers, um, with their investigations. Um, I served, uh, my duties also consisted of a sexual assault wave investigator, narcotics investigator, investigating motor vehicle homicide or, uh, motor vehicle fatalities, uh, any deaths that were, uh, suspicious or or, you know, again, suicides, overdoses, the things of that nature. Um, again, serving in this capacity, it's, and and I created so many working relationships with other law enforcement officials from, uh, both city, uh, surrounding cities and towns and our federal, uh, law enforcement agencies, uh, the FBI, the DEA, the ATF, and Homeland Security. I created these contacts, um, which have been instrumental, um, with everything I do. Um, no matter what is going on, there's somebody that we can call, um, and get assistance. Working with these agencies and working, investigating this brand, um, it it's given me the experience and the confidence to respond to any type of crime regardless of the seriousness in nature. Um, it's, it's given me the ability to quickly assess these, these, uh, responses, uh, determine what assets are needed, what assets are available, and how to obtain these assets in a reasonable amount of time. Um, having said all this, you know, assuming these responsibilities, these roles are responsibilities, serving these capacities, um, I strongly believe, I, you know, I've been unknowingly have been being groomed to this position for quite some time. So Douglas, to answer that question once, uh, once again, or take another shot at it, I see myself sitting here in this chair once again in front of the board, seeking the position of a chief of police. Um, and of course, uh, serving the residents of the town of Southwood through most of my ability. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
No further questions?
Sure. None from me? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Hey.
Thank you.
Most. Back to our regularly scheduled program. Okay, meeting discussion items. Action item bills, mails, correspondence. Yada yada. Uh, first, approve and designate surplus chief administrative office chair for Carl J. Steinhardt, and I have already deposited one US dollar with the town clerk. I'd entertain a motion to approve and designate surplus the chair of Mr. Steinhardt.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, it is a roll call vote because there is a dollar at stake here. Doug Moglan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane, aye.
Approve the request from Conservation Commission to amend an ARPA fund vote to include camera and maintenance costs of the cameras and to remove porta potties.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Discussion? Has it, was anyone present at the Concom when they discussed this? Yeah. Okay. You want to give the summary?
Uh, basically, the ARPA money, they want to use it to set up the cameras that they've been talking about, um, and the maintenance costs and operating costs, and they want to remove the porta potties. That's pretty much straightforward on that one. I don't see any issues with what I've read. I don't know. So, that's it in a nutshell.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote, Doug Moglan, I'll abstain.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane, aye.
Okay. Approve Pioneer Valley Planning Commission invoice number 13 for fiscal year 21 Community Assistance Program for $1,709.33.
Make that motion.
Second.
Doug Moglan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane, aye.
Approve the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission invoice number 14 for fiscal year 21 Southwood Community Assistance Program for $2,705.16.
I'll make that motion.
Doug Moglan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane, aye.
Approve the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission invoice number 15 for fiscal year 21 Southwood Community Assistance Program for
I will make that motion.
Second.
Only one more to go, folks. Approve the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission invoice number 16 for fiscal year 21 Southwood Community Assistance Program for $344.60.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Doug Moglan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane, aye.
You didn't throw a roll call vote on the last one?
I didn't?
No.
Which one? The the $1,200 one?
The one prior to this one.
Okay, let's, let's, uh, go back and check that. Uh, PVPC invoice 15, 120979, a motion was made and seconded. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Doug Moglan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane, aye.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, acknowledge Southwick Rotary Flyer requesting a donation for the summer concert series. Uh, I will invoke the rule of necessity since the select board is a corporate member of the Rotary, and I believe in previous years, we did make a motion to be a sponsor from the select select board gift account. I don't recall the dollar amount, however.
You did silver.
God, is that you?
Sorry.
Wow. That's awesome. Uh, so would anyone like to make a motion to apportion $100 from the select board gift account to the, uh, support the summer concert series by the Rotary?
I will make that motion.
Second.
I will definitely take a roll call vote this time. Doug Moglan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane, aye.
Okay. So we're up to new business first, no?
The old agenda.
Set of gen, amendment one. There's amendment two.
One a.
Okay.
Multiple part question.
Approve and sign the memorandum of agreement between the town of Southwick and the Southwick Police Coalition for Kelly Jakem, Jakem, it's close. Kel, aye, yes. Okay, so I need a motion for the chair to sign.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Doug Moglan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane, aye.
Okay. Want your agenda back too. Is there any other changes on this agenda besides that? Okay, good.
That was it.
Thank God. All right, new business. Lady?
None.
Interim CAO, Landis? Welcome, by the way. I think I said at the beginning, but you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
I'm taking over.
Huh?
Taking under the team.
Oh. Well, that's because it's Kikaro.
I have a quick one, uh, for the budget review that we will be doing. Um, I have done a little tracking of prior four years expenditures versus the budget amounts in this kind of format. If you think this would be helpful to you, I can get copies for you. Basically, each page that you have with the trending and some suggested changes. Or if you've done your own, that's fine, but I can share those with you if you like.
Are you just doing this in conjunction with finance or on your own?
That's just my analysis.
That's your analysis.
And I? And her?
Okay. I'll get you probably.
Jason, new business?
None right now.
Okay. Mr. Brown here, or see on Zoom? There's a lot of people on Zoom. So Randy, are you here? There you are.
Yes, I'm here, Doug.
All right, so we're going to go to some of the old business, updated road infrastructures from DPW Director for Fiscal Year 24, which we did talk about last week and carried to this week. So discussion.
I know Randy kind of played it all out here in the.
We had to kind of figure out what we're going to do here.
I had a question for Randy on the, um, remove the sidewalk on Garden Terrace South Side. Was it removed and replaced on the south side or just removed?
I can grab that one. It was removed and grassed. So there's only the, I guess it would be the north side has a cruddy sidewalk remaining.
Right, because we're all going to do a sidewalk.
We're going to do one side correctly and remove the other one, which was done.
All right. And then my second question on the 4A, B, and C, Feeding Hills Road. Um, it's proposed to go to number 268. Um, why not go rest to the town line, which is about 4/10 of a mile?
268 is just past Calabrese, the top of the hill there.
Yep.
So that's where there's a transition in the asphalt, so mass, it was a mass DOT project. Uh, they resurfaced that section of Feeding Hills Road from 286 to the town line. I want to say that was six or seven years ago.
Okay.
And that road is, that that section is still in good condition.
Thank you.
So Randy, because that's just mass DOT did that because of the project they did, is, or is that their responsibility, that little section?
No, it's our responsibility. Uh, I I call it a bonus, um, maybe payback for Congamon Road. I I honestly wasn't even aware of the project until the day the crew showed up, and they started milling the road all the way down to where they ended at 280, 268. And, um, I didn't say anything. It was just DOT took it upon themselves to repair that section of road, replace it.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
So if I recall from our conversation last week, you have there's $540,000. Regar, um, not, the projects that are started on 2024 are still going to happen, but then with the fair share and the carryover from previous years, there's $540,000 to allocate amongst the, uh, gajillion dollars on items one through 21.
As of today, yes, and then, and then we do expect to receive our, our FY25 Chapter 90 share. Those funds should be allocated in June or July timeframe, and that's typically $370,000, give or take. And then I'm also very hopeful that there'll be some, uh, funds from, uh, the town allocated at town meeting.
Correct. Randy, which of, uh, this is for my edification, of the, uh, 3 through 4C, what's the worst part?
The worst section of Feeding Hills Road?
Yeah.
It's got to be, uh, from Crepes up to, uh, Feeding Hills Road. And then, and then from there to the, uh, top of the hill by past Calabrese. 286.
Crepes to Foster or or you have Crepes to Foster and Crepes to 268?
Yeah, I wasn't sure what, uh, afterwards, we spoke at last week's meeting, what sections you were referring to. So I kind of broke it up into these three sections. So obviously, we'd like to do the whole road, but, uh, that that obviously takes more, more funds to do. Ultimately, I'd like to do, I mean, I think 4B would be a good goal to get from Crepes to, uh, 286 or, yeah, 268, sorry. I think we can get there if we do the drainage work first, and then if we wait till our Chapter 90 money is allocated. And we should be pretty much, uh, pretty close to that 490 number.
And you just did some drainage work in that general area, correct?
We did last fall, and the intent is to continue that all the way to Foster Road.
And you want to allocate the whole 540 or close to it, correct?
Uh, well, right now, uh, what I'm suggesting is allocating just the drainage work on fa, on Feeding Hills Road, which is project three. And then withholding the $290,000, wait until we get the Chapter 90 money.
Fine.
Combine those two together, and then we have more than enough to do 4B.
Okay.
But three does not have any paving in it. It's just digging it up and putting a patch over where you do your work, correct?
Correct, just like we did, uh, in the fall.
So that 350 would still leave you some monies left out of this list to pick a spot. Correct?
If you're, uh, not looking at paving Feeding Hills Road, then yes.
Or you would just allocate that?
Well, sorry, there was a question.
To allocate the monies to a project, but you're going to do the drainage on number, you you recommend to do number three first, and then come through and do a paving project to close that up from either 4A, B, or C. And then maybe combine last year's money or this year's money with next year's money?
Correct, to do the paving.
Seems reasonable to me. No doubt.
Probably the worst that I've seen in the town. So when I know it's.
You gotta get out more. There's some pretty interesting roads. As far as. On a main thoroughfare and that's kind of a failing for. There's, you know, that we don't need to go over how we got there, but under uh same, but I agree. I think that um I think you need to do finish the drainage project that he's talking about and then go through and we'll take the rest, the remaining money and allocate it towards paving it when he gets his other and and leverage it with existing, I'm sorry, with new monies for the two thousand fiscal year twenty twenty five. Subtle nodding of heads?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so can we uh vote to all right, make a motion to approve project number three Feeding Hills Road Foster to Buckingham Drainage in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and then roll the balance between the five forty and less than three fifty forward into projects for the two thousand fifteen season. Is that how I understand it?
That's how I understood it.
Two thousand fifteen.
Twenty twenty five. I I get my decade right. Been a long day, bud.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Roll call vote, Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Can I ask a question, Doug, before you move on? Just just to clear, just to clarify, I did add some language about uh reallocating some funds from Point Grove Road in the letter. The very bottom of page one. I want to make sure that you're also amenable with that. We we took funds out of the water and sewer accounts to uh work on some improvements at the intersection of Point Grove Road. Uh that project was a little over budget. Uh so when I get that worked on, I took those accounts. But I like to uh replenish those with these dollars if avail, if if amenable to the board.
So the eighteen thousand, eighteen two out of the five forty as well?
Correct, that'll come out of the five forty.
What's, if we went over, we gotta pay it.
That's where it came from, from the path.
Sounded like a motion.
Make that motion, pay that, or move those funds.
Roll call vote, Doug Mogul, aye. Jason Perron, aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Brown?
No, I'm gonna my end.
Sorry, we're kind of slow when it's six dollars like that.
No worries.
Mister Davidson was here and then he left. So I'll give you the uh, there was a bit of an update in your folder tonight about the bench. So I'll ask the young man to come back in front of us again for our next meeting. Basically, the the location did not work at the town common cemetery. It's not really workable for what what the gentleman would like, the young man would like to produce. So it's been suggested that perhaps that he would make something for Prifty Park. I'd like to have him come back and kind of answer to that.
For next move?
Yes. Council on Aging Director Internal Posting's done. That closes this Friday. Police Chief Internal Recruitment Process, April first interview and discuss selection appointment. What's your pleasure? Well, we had two great interviews, by the way.
We did. Well, tonight I came in here. Originally, I wasn't gonna pick either one. I was gonna insist on going to an assessment center again. Because I think these two, both these two gentlemen are both qualified and eligible subjects for the chief's position. After observing the interviews, um I was definitely swayed. You know, coming from my, as you guys like to call it, expertise. There's a lot of stuff that's been going on, a lot of things I had to review, a lot of things I had to talk to people about. And as someone who's been through these processes and at different levels, I know what it takes to get to these positions. That being said, people learn from mistakes. Mistakes are made. And if they're a learning tool, people can be redeemed, as I like to call it. So therefore, I would like to make a motion to appoint Lieutenant Rhett Banish as the Chief of Police.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
I think he's a very strong choice. He has a head for becoming more efficient, more use grasping technology to promote the department's business. I talked to a lot of people on this, got a lot of inputs. I think he definitely has the most experience. Both equally dedicated and we're blessed to have that. But I would second that motion. For Rhett Banish.
I just would like to uh clarify uh before we proceed to a vote. First of all, we have to clarify and with all the yada yadas, subject to negotiation of a contract and an agreement and all of that other stuff that needs to be part of the motion. And whatever else needs to be done to meet the requirements under under our our statutory stuff. But I really want to thank both candidates for putting themselves out there to make Southwick a better place. To make the police department a better department. I know we've had a lot of conversations with a lot of members of the department, Sergeant Crook, Lieutenant Banish. Um, you know, sometimes through the heights of negotiations as we proceed through that minefield and and other times where um and you both addressed it tonight, that we're lucky. Lucky that we have a great department and a great bench. And we're gonna need to continue with that. We're lucky that the citizens of Southwick are blessed to have such a great police department today. And the police department is equally blessed that people still wave and honk and salute the men and women of the Southwick Police Department when they drive by. And believe me, in this day and age, that's no small measure. So I I will get off my soapbox, but I did want to make that clear. And I really do appreciate both of you for putting yourself out there as part of this process. I know it's been arduous. I know it's been, you know, there's been a lot of of back and forth and there's been a lot of uh whatever you want to call it. There's been a lot of it. So with that, we do have a motion made and seconded on the floor. And I'm gonna call for a vote and I will vote, Doug Mogul, yes.
Jason Perron, yes.
Congratulations, Lieutenant Banish, subject to the yada yadas. Sergeant Crook, uh, thank you very, very much.
Very much appreciated.
High speed internet I M A for Westfield Gas and Electric. Uh, we had a posting mess up and we didn't meet. So the meeting never happened. Uh, we have to post a new agenda with our schedule. That looks like it's going to be uh the week after next, just with all of the stuff we have going on with budget meetings and so on and so forth. Marijuana dispensary webpage hosting, any update?
I'm very frustrated with it. Um, things are changing daily. So what I did yesterday is gonna change um for getting that.
I think at some point. But it's not your fault. I know it's it this whole thing's like we said, they they keep changing the rules at every step. I think we just gotta rip the Band-Aid off and just do something so that we can get our applications in. And if the rules change, we'll make everyone else go along. You know, I know this was something that, you know, we held a special for, we want to try to get this started. And the, you know, the people spoke loudly about it, so let's keep that process moving. I appreciate you bird dogging this, I really do. Hunting bylaw proposed related to private land. Uh, we talked about this last week that we want to kind of have a public information session. Um, did we pick a date on that? So April sixteenth. April sixteenth in this room. So anyone that wants to come down and talk about this, we're not gonna have any kind of, it's not a uh it's a work session, we're not gonna vote on anything. I, we just want to take input and get feedback from people. So please make your voice heard. Bring your friends, bring your family.
What time will that be?
Six o'clock right here. Land license, no update, mass general law, any update? Sixty one, sixty one A, sixty one B.
That's waiting for a date to be scheduled for the department's.
After town meeting. Town Administrator Recruitment Panel, finer interviews by select board in April. April sixth. So apologies, we did talk about it last week during the meeting, but uh we did turn up a conflict, all mine. Um, so we pushed that meeting to Saturday, April sixth, ten AM in the other room. T-Mobile Hometown Grants.
I sat with Kara this week, um talked there, we're waiting on uh I need estimates on the equipment and the bid. From I believe Mister Shield and was was gonna look into that for us. Um, once I have that, I can finish putting the grant together and get the remaining stakeholders individuals to sign on and leave that forward.
Master Plan Implementation Committee. Um, I did a little bit more writing on this. I want to get with Mister Dowd again, but I wanted to give you an update on my, I think where I left it. And my notes are a little bit incomplete, but um it would be a select board member, a planning board member. Uh, one resident select board appointee, one planning board appointee, and then there's one more. And I don't know if that's a joint appointment or or we have to figure that out because frankly, we get outdone with a joint appointment because they got five guys. Um, so we have to work that through. But I would like to kind of isolate out a mission for that master plan implementation committee rather than just appointing a committee and saying, go committee. So the things I wrote down that I need to, I would like to follow up with Chairman Doughty is to report to the town meeting annually, at least report to the select board and planning board biannually. Um, identify successful strategies and barriers to progress, conduct outreach and provide a conduit for public input. Um, as well as evaluate progress via metrics based on the master plan and other relevant data. There was plenty of stuff in the master plan itself. Norm Cheever spent there he is right now. I didn't see you till I said your name. Norm Cheever spent a gazillion hours putting different measurements and and metrics into the master plan itself that a master plan implementation committee can use as a guide to kind of measure progress. Um, so I'd like to see that those tools utilized um to their fullest capability as part of that process. Um, and then I I just think that this, the the M P I C should meet probably around five to six times a year. You know, so once every other month or you meet during the winter, you meet a few times and take a couple of months off in the summer. But um I think that would be my, you know, my thoughts. Interested to hear any feedback on that.
Would they have authority to develop work groups to tackle options?
By all means. Yeah.
They need to know that.
Yeah.
No input right now.
Good. Cause it's nine o'clock, just kidding. Oh, boy. Um, and and I was remiss, I forgot, I'm, I'll get to you one more second. I forgot one item under new business, so I'll cover it under old business. Um, I'd like for the board to consider, this is something we had done in the past. I think we got away from it for a couple of years. But I would like for the board to consider to vote on or would allow me to craft a a proclamation for our next meeting, um which would be to uh honor Donate Life Month. April is Donate Life Month in the Commonwealth. We typically had lit up the the town hall in the color, it was blue, for Donate Life Month. Uh, we did have a heart plant recipient in our town that has since passed, but uh who was very, very active in that, in the Donate Life program and was very active in recruiting folks to make sure that you're signed up to be an or an organ donor and and to be cognizant of that. Um, so with your permission, I'd like to craft that proclamation to be adopted by this board at the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other old business? No, I wanted it, I I didn't want to bring it up because I wanted to, thank you for mentioning it. I didn't want to bring it up because I want to carry it as an agenda item. I did not want to spring that on anybody as part of an amended agenda because there's costs associated with that and there's process associated with that. We're doing it for this year's local election. It's going to happen. Everybody got the postcards, we're signed up to do it. If we need to take some other vote as a formality for this year, for reimbursement purposes, we should do it. But I think it's a good topic to discuss whether or not we want to continue to have early voting for local elections or we're fine having it on, do we still have mail-in voting? You'll still have that, but do we want to have also early voting for local elections? So I want to bring that up as an agenda item. I want to hear if there's pros and cons to that. Um, and have that discussion. I didn't, I just felt it would be improper. Uh, especially given my position to bring that up at this juncture without it being on a formal agenda for discussion.
Right, that's so Jessica will add, make and provide info.
Yes, I believe so. And if if not, uh if it's a problem for this year, we'll carry it on the agenda for our next meeting because we're gonna, I think we have another meeting on uh whatever day that is that we're meeting next. I know we're meeting, is it this Thursday? We talked about this, right? We have a budget review meeting, so it's a it's a posted meeting, so we can take a vote. If we need to take a formal vote for this particular election, that's already happening and we're already gonna do it. And that's fine. But if I think as a board via policy, we should talk about that for in out, you know, outlying years. And I'll I'll confer with Jass to see if we need to do something to take up an affirmative vote for this particular election. But that that's just my opinion. I don't think we should change, we should have something come up after the agenda was already posted as significant as dealing with voting without it being on a posted agenda. Is that right?
Yeah, I thought, I thought clarified that.
Any other old business? Sir?
None.
Sir? Wow. I didn't obtain a motion to adjourn then.
Motion made.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, folks.